Today is Tuesday, December the third, two thousand and nineteen. Time is now six P M. The regular meeting of the City Council, City Attorney, and that will now come to order. Please rise for the ladies. Victor, would you please give us the place of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call, please.
Donato.
Here.
Goodall.
Here.
Grago.
Here.
Lopez.
Here.
Matei.
Here.
Miles.
Here.
Rico.
Here. Item two, approval of the agenda. Does council have any changes to the agenda? None? Could I have a motion?
I move we have first the agenda discussion.
Second, okay. Call vote?
Donato?
Yes.
Goodall?
Yes.
Grago?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Matei?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes.
Item three, policy, admin staff reports. Do we have anything right? No, okay. Item four, petitions or communications are all written. Do we have anyone signed up?
We do. They go on like every sign next. He will call.
What is it?
Alan Allen?
Alan Allen. Yeah, Mom and Dad had fifty cents of humor.
Come on, please. State your name. Like I said, you have about five minutes. You have five minutes for the presentation?
My name is Alan Allen, and I'm based in Trinidad, living at fifteen oh five K Street. And what I want to kind of address is the recently approved General District Regulation of fourteen dash twenty-six eleven to one of shipping containers. And I've had some discussions with, with a couple of folks around here that it's a, it's a unique... I was out of town when it got passed, and so I didn't have a chance to, to see it before it was reviewed. And it's, it seems to me it's an interesting blend of restrictive and overly broad and then narrowly focused. I understood the intent of the regulation was to not have people with mashed up, dented, you know, rusty things in their backyards. No offense rusty. And, you know, and, and I understand that. However, the regulation has been written, is so prohibitive, that I've got a project going on where I'm going to actually build a building on my property out of shipping containers, which is one of the most eco-friendly, viable, newest ways of putting, assembling buildings. And I can't do it because now the regulation is in. And my building will be out of forty-foot containers. I've got four lots. Two of them are empty. It's not impactful on the lots. But yet, the reading of the, of the regulation basically says you can't have anything but a twenty-foot container. And what I'm, what I think is that when you guys were well intentioned in putting this together, you were thinking about a single twenty-foot container that somebody used for just putting garden equipment in or something like that. And they'd let go down the years, or in some cases, they bought it banged up in the first place. There's a, anyway, so it's, it's, it occurred to me that while you don't specifically mention what I'm going to do, it's generally prohibited. And so what I'm hoping to do is to get you to potentially revisit that regulation and maybe focus it a little better for the things that you really want. Because what you've got right now is, is a regulation that says, for instance, we want to get rid of all the rusty cars in all of, all over town. People got junk yards in there. So we're going to ban all the cars, except for this kind of car, which you can have for six months. And then you have to get rid of it, however that works. And so I don't think, I think there's, it's fraught with unintended consequences, some good and some bad. And there are, I think there's ways to get around it or to, to better increase the odds of what the council had intended. Just right off the top of my head, I've, I've talked to people about potentially putting in a permit situation, license situation, where you, you know, a person who wanted one in their yard or for whatever reason would pay for that permit. And then as part of that permit, there was a list of things that you could do to have it on your property, keep it painted, keep it repaired. Although I must say, they don't do that for any buildings. There's no rules that say you have to keep your sheds. There's a lot of lean-in sheds around town. And people are allowed to have those. The other, one of the other things that came to mind is that it's, it's potentially possible that you have a requirement that if you have any kind of container on your property for, for usage, then they have a foundation underneath it. You know, they're, they're pure foundations. All the structural strength of a container is in its four corners. And so you need to put, you know, foundations underneath it. I've got just architectural design in my foundations that will go in a building permit. And one of the other things that, that I'm not sure that people are aware, that they have different grading structures of, of containers. They, they range all the way from what's called a handyman container, which is the beat-up, mashed-in, rusty, you know, things that, that people buy. That's obviously the cheapest. It's one of the reasons people have it. But they range all the way up to brand-new containers, which is nothing more than a perfectly in-repair fourteen-gauge metal building.
The surround would spin five minutes.
Okay. Do you know what? I'd like to give you the phone number.
Sure, sure.
It's forty-four. Forty-four.
Six-one-two.
Six-one-two.
Eight-two-two-seven.
Eight-two-two-seven. I'll call you and talk to you about this.
Yeah.
I think you have a discussion within what we have, and we're going to have more.
Right, yeah.
So.
Yeah, I think if you, if you just Google, um, shipping container buildings. Last I saw it, before I came here, it was thirty-two million hits. And so there's a lot of information out there.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
The only other thing I have here, and this was some correspondence that was sent to us by a Yvonne Botman. Have you had information on that?
Mayor, may I? Okay, thank you. Well, this is a matter of that we have been dealing with in, in part for quite a while. And as I was saying to Councilwoman Grago earlier, there are a number of matters that we may be having an executive session on. There are a number of things that I want to give you legal advice with respect to. And this is, is probably one of them, okay? It would be for legal advice. There are a number of things. I just want to let you know that I have this, this correspondence, and it's kind of an ongoing issue. So I will answer the, you know, questions raised in here and let you know when we may be having an executive session.
Okay.
Thank you.
Right.
We will leave this unresolved.
Okay, thank you. Item five, consent agenda. Item five A, approval of regular meetings of November the nineteenth, twenty nineteen. Special meeting minutes of November the twenty-sixth, twenty nineteen. Approval item B, approval of the bills for the amount of... One million, seven hundred sixty-nine thousand, five hundred twenty-three dollars and sixteen cents. Item C, approval of the payroll, November the thirtieth, twenty nineteen through December the thirteenth, twenty nineteen, for four hundred seventy thousand, fifty-five dollars and sixty-five cents. Could I have a motion, please?
I move to approve.
Second?
Second.
Call vote, please.
Donato?
Yes.
Goodall?
Yes.
Grago?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Matei?
Yes, to all things, except the meeting I was not able to attend on November twenty-sixth.
Miles?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Item six, public hearings. Item six A, public hearing for consideration of ordinance amending section ten dash five four municipal court appointment. Old salary powers of the code of the city of Trinidad to amend the court costs assessed for court filings. Discuss that a while back, and that was going to go from fifteen dollars to forty dollars. Hearing is now open. Les, do you have anything to add to this?
Mayor, council members, I don't. I will tell you Judge Nelson and Ms. Sandoval are in attendance if you have any questions. But I really have no further comment unless you have questions of either myself or of the ladies.
Do you have any questions or anything on the ordinance?
Nothing further to add beyond the work session.
Okay, thank you. Counsel?
I think it's appropriate.
Yeah? No.
Good.
Okay. Anyone in the audience to speak for or against the ordinance? Hearing is closed. Item six A one, second reading of an ordinance amending section ten dash five four municipal court appointment. Old salary powers of the code of the city of Trinidad to amend the court costs assessed for court filings from fifteen dollars to forty dollars. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Right after, there's probably no discussion. Call vote, please.
Donato?
Yes.
Goodall?
Yes.
Grago?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Matei?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Item six B, public hearing for consideration of ordinance amending section ten dash one municipal court. Creation of the Trinidad Municipal Code to establish the city of Trinidad Municipal Court as a court of record pursuant to the provisions of CRS thirteen dash ten dash one oh one, et cetera. Hearing is now open. Les, do you have anything else on that particular matter?
I do not. Mayor, council members, again, here to answer any questions.
Any discussion from counsel?
No.
No, sir.
None of them, okay? Anyone in the audience to speak for or against the matter? Not. Hearing is closed. Item six B one, second reading of an ordinance amending section dash one municipal court. Creation of the Trinidad Municipal Code to establish the city of Trinidad Municipal Court as a court of record pursuant to the provisions of CRS section, CRS thirteen dash ten, one oh one, et cetera. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, with the girls playing a discussion, have already. Could you call a vote?
Donato?
Yes.
Goodall?
Yes.
Grago?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Matei?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Item C, public hearing for consideration of an ordinance appropriating certain sums of money out of the revenues of the city of Trinidad, Colorado to defray and meet the liabilities of the city of Trinidad for fiscal year beginning January one, twenty twenty, and ending December thirty-one, twenty twenty. Said ordinance being termed the annual appropriation bill for the twenty-twenty fiscal year to tune the amount of, for the amount of forty-seven million, nine hundred seventy-seven thousand, six hundred and five dollars. Hearing is now open. Any additional shares, shall we? Do you have any additional information, shall we? None, okay? Counsel, do you have any questions, Mr. Tate?
Motion, sir. I think we discussed it all.
Yep.
The meetings.
Good, okay. Anyone in the audience to speak for or against the consideration of the ordinance or appropriations? Not. Hearing is closed. Item C one, second reading of ordinance appropriating certain monies, certain sums of money out of the revenues of the city of Trinidad, Colorado to defray and meet the liabilities of the city of Trinidad for fiscal year beginning January one, twenty twenty, and ending December thirty-one, twenty twenty. Said, said ordinance being termed the annual appropriation bill for the twenty-twenty fiscal year for the amount, an amount of forty-seven million dollars, forty-seven million, nine hundred seventy-seven thousand, six hundred and five dollars. Could I have a motion, please? So moved. Could I have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Call a vote, please.
Donato?
Yes.
Goodall?
Yes.
Grago?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Matei?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Item B, public hearing for consideration of ordinance authorizing the conveyance of certain rental property owned by the city of Trinidad to Trinidad Urban Renewal Authority. Hearing is now open. Mike?
Uh, not much to add, Mayor, Council, from our work session or the first hearing on this, other than it's a piece of property off of Cedar Street between Commercial and Chestnut that we've owned for over a hundred years, and it's been a dirt lot all that time. So I think it's appropriate that we convey it to Urban Renewal and see if they can't get something going with that property.
Okay. Discussion, counsel, Mr. Tate? Karen?
No, sir. I'm excited to see them do something, if they choose to accept it, you know, through their work.
I think it's a good deal. The Urban Renewal and the city work together on this, right? As far as what's going to be there and what's not going to be there or whatever?
Well, Urban, what, what will happen is Urban Renewal will have to advertise for a project to see if anybody has any kind of, you know, project. And they'll analyze to see if it's good for economic development, if it creates jobs, if it, it solves the blind issue that's there.
It doesn't kind of contradict what we had in our work session about parking and stuff like that, where we could say, maybe that was a good idea if we put a parking back there or whatever. I don't know how that would work, but as long as it they work together and see.
Sure.
You know, so, yeah. And that's what we discussed in our work session was parking back there too. So maybe I'd be one idea to pass on.
Second? Any other counsel discussion? Anyone in the audience to speak for or against the consideration of the ordinance? Not. Hearing is closed. Item D one, second reading of an ordinance authorizing the conveyance of certain real property owned by the city of Trinidad to Trinidad Urban Renewal. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Call vote, please.
Donato?
Yes.
Goodall?
Yes.
Grago?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Matei?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes.
Item seven, that's unfinished business. Do we have none? Item eight, which is miscellaneous business. Item eight, consideration of bid results by Santa Fe Trail twenty-four-inch water vein replacement project number two dash twenty-eighteen. The expenditure is one million, seven hundred thirty-seven thousand, eight hundred fifty-six dollars and ninety-nine cents. The original bid was one million, six hundred thou, or original estimate was one million, six hundred thousand dollars. We received five bids. The low bidder was peak construction. Comes from the money will come from the water capital out later. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Tate?
I'm anxious to hear what we're going to do. Okay, uh, the mayor pretty much laid it out there. That's, uh, what we did was, over the last year and a half, we've been trying to finalize the design and work with CDOT because we'll be pouring under the highway and relighting the water main that's been in the ground since before all of this. I think, yeah. It was before all of this. It's been there a long time. It's a big part of our infrastructure that needs replacing. So we went out to the bid, and we got some fairly decent bids, except for one. I don't know if you had the opportunity to look at it. One was kind of seemed to me like a conditional bid, just put it in there. It was six million dollars, and that was like, we threw that one out right away. So in, in, our engineer went through the whole process, and in, in doing this, his estimate was one point four... I apologize. One point four one. The low bid came in at one point seven three. It's my recommendation that we award the bid to the low bidder to get them on board, and then we will do some value engineering with them. And actually, there will be a change order brought forward to reduce that amount. We've already talked to them. We're looking at, eliminated one of the big twenty-four-inch valves that is cut in to the existing line. That also, that reduces a hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars right off the bat. So I would recommend council approve the bid with that in mind, so that we can go forward with some value engineering on this.
Mike, what, go ahead. Mike, what do they mean by deductive alter number one that got our, on our tack?
Uh, that, that bid was for... So, bid item number eight was abandon existing valve vault with, and fill it with flow fill. We gave them the option of rather than doing flow fill, filling it with sand. So basically, if you look at the paint construction, the parent low bidder, they really didn't give us a deal there. Flow fill is three thousand, two hundred and twenty-two dollars. The sand was three thousand, two hundred and twenty-two dollars and one cent. So.
I just didn't hear that, that they're deductive.
Yeah. That, that was to deduct line eight and add that one in if it came in cheaper, but it, it didn't.
Thank you, sir.
You bet. Questions?
So if they do a change order reducing it by that amount, it's going to bring us right back about where we were budgeted?
We were budgeted at one point six. We hope to get it even farther down with this, yes.
Excellent. And when, when will we start if we approve this now?
Uh, if we approve this, we're anticipating a, a kind of a delayed bid, uh, start date. Probably start in March because of the winter weather and everything. And we're going to be on the highway, that traffic control, the highway may not let, let us, you know, snow and everything on the highway, so.
Yeah, we just got correspondence, kind of this evening, when I got here, and they showed a March beginning date, hopefully, so that's what we're talking about.
Just one other question. Will the, go ahead.
No.
Will the deletion of that one twenty-four-inch valve, will that compromise the system at all?
No, no, we, as a matter of fact, the design had that. We had two twenty-four-inch valves in there. When we did the Second Street project, we were able to tie in on Second and High and activate a valve that's there. And if, if we can eliminate one of them and use that valve there, so, yes.
What happens if you don't get the value engineering that you expect? What's your, what's the city's recourse?
Fix the line. There's, it, the value engineering, we know is already a hundred and thirty-one thousand can be eliminated off of that one point seven.
So you would never consider rebidding it or anything like that?
Um, I don't know if rebidding because of the timing of the contractors, if it would go up or down.
Or risk for losing another seat.
Correct. And just as reference, paint construction are the ones who built Cedar Street for us five years ago. Quality contractor, and we were very happy with their work, so. Yeah, there's.
Questions? Okay.
No, we need to get this done.
Mr. Tate, any questions?
No.
Okay. That was for the questions either. Thanks, Mike. No further discussion. Call a vote, please.
Donato?
Yes.
Goodall?
Yes.
Grago?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Matei?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Rico?
Now, one thing good about it is that shows that we're beginning to put forth some method on some of our infrastructure that's... We're, so that it's been up, so it's good to see that we're moving on something. Item eight, E, consideration of supplemental funding request in amount of three thousand, three hundred eighty-five dollars for completion of original wayfinding in the Southern Rockies, CDOT region two, project twenty-one-one-eight. Could I have a motion? So moved. Second?
Second.
Who has the information on it, Tom, or is that Mike? Victor?
A man who needs no reach of judgment.
What do you have, Bert?
Uh, so the city of Trinidad, uh, this is Judy Walden.
Welcome, Mayor.
Hello. Uh, the city of Trinidad has designated a local agency for the regional project to design and install twenty informational panels in a kiosk in eleven different locations in the Southern Colorado with a budget for the project of three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Uh, we put it up to bid, and we came back, uh, the bid came back at a hundred and fifty thousand, four hundred and eighty-five. So we're short three thousand, three hundred and eighty-five. So before I toss it, I'll toss it over to Judy here. We wanted to do just a small little presentation real quick.
This is two minutes. Okay. Show you what the project is produced for you.
You see what I'm saying?
So the first part of your course is about its wayfinding. You know, at one point it was, you know, walking through the region, then it was horseback driving. And now the wayfinding project we've been involved in has to do with drivers. Okay, during, um, for this project, you see the partners that were involved from eleven different communities, both counties and municipalities. And the idea is to develop a system of information kiosks for travelers who may travel through the region. So as opposed to flying on by, they'll stop and say, this must be important, there's a, there's a kiosk about it. That's what the project's about. Source of the funds, this is a CDOT project, eighty-twenty. We were required to raise twenty percent of the funds, which was seventy-one thousand, eight hundred. And it was matched with eighty percent federal funds, two hundred and eighty-seven thousand. So the total cost of the project, three hundred and fifty-nine thousand. The design phase is completely finished. We have a portfolio. We won't show you everything, but I'm about showing you which materials it looks like. And we're now coming down the home stretch in the construction phase and are three thousand, approximately three thousand, four hundred dollars short. So we've come to ask your consideration in covering that shortfall at the end of the project. So we're literally ready to put them in the ground in eleven places. This is, this is what kiosks look like. In each, in each of the communities, we had a working group. And as opposed to a consultant group coming in saying, this is for travelers about your place. We had meeting, working groups in each community and said, what would you like travelers to know that were coming to your place for the first time? And the council at that point took, you know, quite a few sessions to figure out who to assign and work with us for Trinidad. And they, they said, we're giving you the artist group. So Marilyn Louzler led the effort. This is a photo shoot we were doing one day to try and get, you know, some images. And so that's who was here. And here the four, three panel kiosks have been produced for you. First is on the tone pass, mile marker one. As you come up over the pass, there's a long pullout there and three scenic byway panels that have seen their better day. So will be replaced in that, those panels at that location. The next day is, uh, Cokedale. Now, where do the artists come in? The artists come in in, in the fact that we're, we're wanting to tell travelers about Trinidad through the eyes of an artist. And this is Doug Holdred's work. He used to be a resident of Cokedale. And these are, each panel's fifty-four by forty-eight, so they're big. So this is about Cokedale. Not all the Coketowns, but Cokedale. Where it would have been located? That, um, that's at an existing pull-off above Cokedale, across from the entrance to the state park. It's a good location with lots of room. Or you can get an RV in, RV in someplace, the better. Okay, on the backside of that panel is a panel that features the early settlers in, in the Purgatory Valley. This one's pretty terrific too, I think. And then you see the, um, a lot of the artifacts that all come from the Mitchell Museum. Okay? Then going up over the top of the scenic byway, here you are again with North Lake, Monument Lake, and Stonewall. We had a terrific working group up there. Wildlife people, the game ward, who had a lot to say, and the local landowners. And the work up there, the, this panel is primarily the work of Marilyn Louzler. You'll see her on the, on the right-hand panel, right? So in it, so there's an artist, the artist statement, and the art itself on the panels. So it's different, you know, it has a quality that's local and goes beyond, you know, standard panels. So I think there are plenty of them.
Where are these placed?
This Monument Lake, as you go around North Lake, you, uh, the turn at the far north end, there's a restroom across. And as you drop down, there's a circle. You'll be in the middle of that circle. That's it.
Zach? Questions? Questions for counsel? No?
Very strategic, please.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Karen?
Are all the communities involved are going, are they going to supplement the amount of that valve? So at this point, we're not going to the other communities. CDOT asks that we come to you first. With eleven of them, um, yeah. It's not that much. I just needed to know. We did discuss it, yeah. And, and the maintenance of these signs, are they going to be wood? Right, they're wood, Cedar. Okay. Uh, Cedar panels, and they're unfinished. They seem to weather better that way. And we used a, we used a style that was used by the Forest Service. So they're meant to be in rural places as opposed to in town, which is kind of a more formal look for wayfinding in town. Is CDOT going to be... Is C-DOT gonna be responsible for maintaining? Nope, we have a MOU with every one of the communities, including you, that will put it in. If you want landscape, you would do that. And if there is, um, you know, any damage and you want to replace it, that's, that's up to you too. We'll of course give you all the artwork, so you just have to do it, but, but we have MOUs with each community.
Great. And, um. So say they get, um, weather, okay, you have instances where the sun beats them down and they become faded. Is there a panel we can open it up and replace it with another copy?
Exactly, it's just like their picture. It opens up and closes, it's so easy to get in and out.
Okay, so many times you see some of them that are laminated, especially like Longs Canyon or wherever, where
Right.
you can't do nothing but try to still read it and you can't replace it. That's good to hear. I like that.
The, the, the quality of the panel, it's, it's on aluminum, embedded aluminum. And there have been some in the Grand Canyon over in the Madison area that have been up there over ten years and they're just as bright as the day they were done. And the, the Forest Service recommended when we started that we use the, the cedar panels because they draw less vandalism than the ones that are smoother. That's smooth.
Go figure.
People like to write that they have to stay on a smooth surface instead of a rough surface.
Then you can stand it.
Right, yeah. So they're very sturdy, big posts.
No, these are beautiful, like men's work.
Yeah, fantastic, great job.
And we have the, the contractor, it'll, it'll go in sometime during the winter. His, his bid is still good for, it was ninety days, so we took that almost two months to work on those.
The post on those are, go ahead, go ahead.
I just have a question, I mean, uh, uh, what, three, four years ago, I think we, Tara, thought up the topic about these kiosks and stuff like that. And the, I don't know whatever happened, I don't know if it ever came to being or what happened, but I know we had one down in by Kim or somewhere like that, and it kinda just went out of whack. You know, so it's kinda like a little flashback going back and then coming back forward. I think these are, these are really neat, and this, this would really help the tourism and everything, and I'm, I'm really grateful for the artists and you guys to do something like this because, yeah, you know, that caught my eye directly really fast, and so. But the, the reason I asked that was because nothing seemed like it came out of it before, and there was two, three years, and maybe Mike can answer that for me or whatever.
There was actually another group, um, over in the Kim area that put in some history,
Right.
some history panels, and some of the landowners were not pleased to have people having attention drawn to the private land. And then, the, when we started, we had, instead of these three panels, we had them spread in more of the communities in the panel. And the commissioners asked that we consolidate with you and put them on the highway patrol and.
So you, you don't generate any other problem with like, any other landowners that we had before or stuff like that?
No, and as a matter of fact, you know, the landowners were out in, in full force, you know, for the Stonewall meetings, and they just pitched in, said, say this, don't say that, I don't like that picture, do this, don't, yeah, so full participation. So this is what the communities themselves wanna say.
Well, thank you very much.
Could, could you go through that North Lake kiosk?
Yeah.
And the reason I ask you to is, last Monday, coincidentally, has my wife and I were traveling, she had to stop at her dentist. And, and her dentist's husband has a high, he flights commercial, but he also does, his own flight. They have a picture, I wanted to take a picture of the portrait, and they said, oh, there's a guy at every, where we can get. It's an aerial photograph of Monument Lake and North Lake in one picture, and Highway Twelve as it threads through that. Very apropos for that, and maybe not to be included in this kiosk, but certainly worthy of display somewhere.
You know, you bring up a very good point, because the back of this one is empty.
Oh, this would be very apropos of it.
Right, and, uh, who's your gentleman that takes care of the lakes up there? He said, I need some panels about how the, how about the watershed works up here.
Sure.
So a combination of that and the watershed, and all you'd have to pay for then would be the design and the panels, because you've got your structure. Until you just open it up, pop them in, and that's it.
I would get a copy or take a picture of their painting and get your contact information and forward that to you.
Terrific, thank you.
Yeah, it, it, it was on Spider, you should see that, I said, I don't have that.
And we, we, nobody, we didn't see any, anything to show those.
Yeah, it's one picture, it has both lakes, and then he picks Highway Twelve from an aerial view, how it travels all around.
Terrific.
The only question I have is, the post on that, they're six by sixes, it looks like, it looks like they're pretty hip to those. One thing that you might wanna consider, because even though they're cedar, cedar will deteriorate over a period of time underground. And I don't know if they're, hopefully, because they, you can do an application of some kind of a pressure treat or a, not pressure, but.
They're on concrete. Right, I'm not too bad, so it'll probably hold it a range.
That'll, that'll. The only other, the only other question I have is being out that we have a Fisher's Peak project coming up, this was done. Are you addressing the Fisher's Peak in any way?
We haven't, but it would be really wonderful to tag on to this, you know, coming down the pass, you know, you've got that, you've got that one prime spot. But the other thing that I'd like to propose for the next, and actually I think there'll be an opportunity with this belt grant that's going on, is to also get something in the Elmore Rest Area, C-DOT's open to that. On the inside, when people come out of the restrooms, twenty-five thousand a month, right? So there's some real opportunities to build on this.
Good, because I, I think that's a project that's gonna, you know, it's just creating a lot of interest, so that would be nice. And there was other areas, even coming from the north, you have like the Ledge One project, and all that type of stuff. There's so much, there's so much history in this county that it's, it's hard to count it all.
Ledge is a perfect example. They got, I don't know how they got those huge highway signs. People fight for those for years, right? There's nothing that says what Ledge is. We don't see a way to pull over and say, Ledge, what's that? Must be important.
So that would be so. You did like sofas or something, or the dams now, and, uh, there's a lot of people that are rounding it out, so many bitches of sofas or whatever, but.
That, that's just thoughts, yeah. There's a lot of stuff that I do, we, we have a lot of kiosks around.
You've got a lot going to talk about.
Very well done, thank you.
Thank you for all your efforts.
Appreciate it.
Well done, Sarah.
Okay, call the board, please.
Bernado?
Yes.
Goodall?
Yes.
Griggo?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Minteng?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Rico.
Yes. I made C, first reading of an ordinance amending the city of Trinidad's annual budget for fiscal year beginning on one-one-two-zero-nineteen and ending on twelve-three-one-two-zero-nineteen. Setting the hearing date for consideration of said ordinance, could I have someone to introduce for you?
I'll introduce.
Got a motion?
Oh.
Second, Cheryl? So yeah.
Alrighty, so this ordinance is gonna close out the budget for two thousand nineteen. Actually, when I loaded this on the drive, I'm not sure if the little, get things, get the red font printed on your drive, so. And put a little star next to the marijuana revenue to discuss.
Your age?
Yeah, it's Schedule B. So you had Schedule A and Schedule B in your drive. So first we'll go over Schedule A. This is actually what the ordinance is all about, because you're amending the budget for expenditures to either increase or decrease, and what we're doing is. Um, Schedule, I apologize, Schedule A's on your drive. Make a copy if you'd like.
No, okay.
Go ahead, you want to schedule it first?
Yes, so Schedule A is amending the actual two thousand nineteen budget. It's increasing the expenditures by seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. Reason for the increases, um, there's five hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollar increase in the general fund, ten thousand dollar increase in the tourism fund, and then two hundred thousand dollars increase in the capital projects fund. The increase in the general fund has to do with, um, an increase that we're recognizing in revenue for marijuana. So marijuana, when we originally budgeted, we said that we were gonna collect three million dollars. Of that, two-point-one million was, um, budgeted to be expended for the year, the other nine hundred thousand dollars was going to be set aside in the rainy day fund. So because we're gonna collect more in marijuana, we're anticipating about three-point-five million. That in essence increases the seventy percent of, or two-point-one million by three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So now, there's two-point-four-five million dollars available for marijuana for just later two thousand and eighteen. Um, what we would do with that three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we will talk about at the next work session regarding the fourth quarter marijuana expenditures. But if you recall, on the marijuana expenditure spreadsheet, three hundred and fourteen thousand dollars was used to subsidize the general fund. Well, there's the three hundred and fifty thousand that's gonna cover that amount, which will make an additional three hundred thousand dollars available in, um, for projects and expenses for the fourth quarter. I don't know that we have any use for it, but it will be available, and we'll talk about that in the work session. Does that make sense? The next increase, uh, is eighty-three hundred dollars in a transfer out to lottery. When we completed the two thousand eighteen lottery report, eighty-three hundred dollars were, it considered ineligible expenses under the lottery fund. Uh, CTF kicked it back to us and said, we need to amend it. By, so in order to amend it, the general fund had to pick up that expense and transfer the money back into lottery. And finally, the transfer out of two hundred thousand dollars for capital projects is, was approved by council. That was for the, uh, street repair, that was approved in the first quarter of marijuana go-around. And that was, we're moving that into CIP to be used for the Santa Fe Trail, um, rework that's scheduled for the budget. Any questions on the general fund? Increases for the tourism fund include ten thousand dollars. Tourism fund received an, a grant from Office of Economic Development. Um, this is just to recognize the expense that goes with that grant. This is for this, I'm sorry, Mike, can you help? Is it the study for the bike trail?
This, like, the, uh, RPM?
Yep, that's it.
The bike trail, uh, yes.
So ten thousand dollars was received in tourism, and then here's the ten thousand dollars marking it being expended out. And finally, under the capital projects, there's the two hundred thousand dollars for the citywide paving. So we recognize it as a transfer in the general fund, but then we also recognize it as an expenditure for capital.
That money in, passing through tourism to fund the study, tourism does not have the authority to alter that, honey. I'm asking. And it's gonna go where we want it to go, right? Just ten thousand dollars.
Yes.
It's actually already prepared.
I mean, it's not gonna get into hands of tourism, who would redirect, possibly, would redirect that.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, I have a question, Cheryl, it's just a very basic question. So with the marijuana revenue, so, you know, we've got that extra money, does that have to be spent in the year that it was collected, or can it go into a restricted fund?
We, that would be a conversation for, um, the work session in the fourth quarter. So this hasn't happened, we haven't had a surplus. That would be council's call. We could either use it all up in the fourth quarter, or we figure it out. We, we can also put it in reserves, so.
Okay. Were you, were you using a ratio to say we have this much, so, you know, magic, you know?
Right, yeah, so we will extend that in the fourth quarter allocation, work session. Okay, so then that's, um.
I just, I just wanna make a comment. When I first joined council, the general fund was running an eight-hundred-thousand-dollar deficit. We're draining all of our enterprise funds and starving our infrastructure. What a pleasure to see this.
Yes, it's great.
That's amazing, yeah.
So in essence, Exhibit A is what your, the ordinance is actually amending. We're amending to increase the budget by seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars, seven hundred and sixty-eight, three hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars, so. Um, Exhibit B is just to clean up the budget. It's, it's just gonna show that our revenues are anticipated, or, we're, we're gonna get them a little closer aligned than what, uh, than what we had budgeted. So for example, we're recognizing two-point-one million dollars more in the general fund. And then, of course, you see that that's attributed to sales tax revenue and marijuana sales tax revenue.
Now, how does that affect a landfill, you know, like, uh, general fund, now that, now that goes into a total? They're an entity, right?
Right.
Utility.
Right.
So now they're separate, so that money that's generated from landfill or whatever goes into the capital improvement, I mean, yeah, capital improvement.
It'll go into its own fund.
Utility fund.
It'll be in its own utility fund, just like power and light, just like water, just like gas, it's gonna stand on its own. So it has to generate enough revenue to cover its expense.
What happens if it don't?
The general fund, so it would have to sustain.
I don't, I don't, you have a pilot, you have, you get a pilot, typically you're taxed.
Actually, we've already budgeted the pilot.
Uh-huh.
Okay.
Yep, so.
You have to have an increase in fares to the landlord.
Increase in rates or general fund subsidizes, which is what used to happen, I believe.
All the time.
Before, when it was enterprise owned, it was owned the first time.
And there is no thought of privatizing anything that gas was either in the near future?
No.
Okay, I wanna make that straight, because people ask me, no, they drive me crazy, but.
Hey Cheryl, I need to ask you just another question. I noticed in the, on the budget for the landfill,
Yes.
how did you come out with an, an amount for that? Did you, were you able to go into the, uh, finances of the city and find out? Were they coded so you'd know kind of?
That's correct.
So you know what was what, it was not a guess?
No, it was not a guess at all. Landfill had its own revenue line item. Anything that came into the landfill posted there. We were able to break that up so that if we start receiving e-waste, that was also set up as a separate line item, so that was simple. And then regarding expenditures, it was its own department, so it's still on its own as well.
So, that's my question, so, with, with, uh, the new, what is it, barrel out there or container that people throw their, their
E-waste.
microwaves or whatever and stuff, that goes directly with the landfill then, right?
Yes.
That doesn't go in, that money doesn't go anywhere else, but.
It's recognized in landfill and then the expense is recognized.
I think that's gonna help us a lot too, Tom. I think Tom done great there. Okay, thank you, Cheryl.
Sure.
Okay. Just thought, if you asked you, Tom, are we getting some action out there with people, with the e-waste?
Uh, we have gotten quite a bit, actually, first, and we haven't done any advertising, literally.
Go ahead.
And when we do that, probably around the first year, we'll, we'll push it pretty hard, but we've gotten, it's, I would say the container's probably half full at this point.
Go ahead, go ahead, thank you.
So regarding gas fund revenue increase, that's relevant to the grant we received from DOLA, I believe it was early March. This is the grant that, um, was, um, we were awarded for the meter project. So it was a nine-hundred and, whatever that is, times two, thousand dollar grant, and then four hundred and fifty thousand of that would be revenue. It was fifty-fifty grant, yeah. Regarding sewer fund, same thing, we received, uh, a two hundred thousand. Did we receive that? Oh my goodness, too many numbers. Oh, I know, so the sewer grant is also collecting revenue, we just didn't budget it. So there's the water sewer, uh, project, um, of course, it's split into water and sewer, but we were recognizing all the revenue in water. However, the amount that's attributed to the sewer portion needs to be moved into sewer. So DOLA money received for that project, I needed to get moved into sewer, and now we're just recognizing that revenue for that portion of the project. And then finally, or, well, this, the little ones lottery fund, that's the eighty-three hundred dollars that corresponds with the transfer. And tourism fund revenue, here's the ten thousand dollars from Office of Economic Development to offset the rent expense. And then the capital projects fund, I've also increased, increased the sales tax, because we're anticipating more generals, or, yes, general sales tax. So I've increased that to give us more in the line of what we're gonna receive. And finally, the two hundred thousand dollar transfer in from the general fund for that marijuana project, or the marijuana allocation for the citywide paving. And what I, why I reprinted Exhibit B for you is so that you could see the red font at the bottom. It's just that it was increased and that, just so that you remember, we're increasing marijuana revenue to three point five million, but a million five of that is set aside for um, the rainy day fund. You really don't set that up as an expenditure in the budget. It's just a reclassification of cash, if that makes sense.
So on that rainy day fund, are we using some of that money to invest? We're not investing none of that with the new?
We are investing all of it.
We're investing all of it, and so with the new rates, we're good, we're seeing a pretty good return.
We are, it's amazing, yes.
And that's with SeaSafe, correct?
Yeah. Uh, marijuana is with Colorado Trust.
Colorado Trust.
So we have two different pools and marijuana is with Colorado Trust.
Excellent.
Okay, so any more questions?
Questions, Mr. Matek?
No. Thank you, ma'am.
The girl I'm seeing is making some really good decisions. It seems like higher brightness to form our money like several transfers to SeaSafe and Colorado Trust and it's uh, it's showing.
It's interesting about that interest. It would be nice on the final report.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Okay, if there is enough of a discussion, call a vote please.
Donato?
Yes.
Goodall?
Yes.
Regal?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Out of nine council reports, Mr. Matek? What did you report, report, thank you.
Uh, because of the holiday, I haven't any, none of my boards that I represent have, have done, uh, had any meetings. But I do want to tell council that I follow the Denver news. And the Denver City Council is starting, they're going to vote here pretty quick on the ten cents for plastic and paper. Uh, at um, supermarkets and, and the big chains. And the feedback they're getting from people in Denver area is pretty interesting. So I'll let you know what's going on. It'd be interesting to see how they, how they uh, they rule on that. It's pretty controversial, actually. But anyway, I, you know, at beginning of the, end of the year, we have one, one more meeting left. But as Michelle mentioned with the budget, I mean, it's amazing to me to see the professionalism that our city staff, every last one of you. Uh, the way you do perform your job is, I'm in awe of every last one of you. And I think that budget reflects that. I mean, if you weren't watching your expenditures and doing the business of the city of Trinidad if you should be, that wouldn't be happening. And it's not just your, it's all of you, and I really want to thank you. It's just too bad that people in Trinidad don't see the work that city staff puts into maintaining and operating this city. And I, I so appreciate you, especially since I'm sitting here instead of over there. I, I appreciate you very much. And I can't let the year go by without telling you thank you so very much. I appreciate you.
Only two, like you said, we have that opportunity where we're able to do something with the excess money that we have and, and use it like we're supposed to.
Well, I, I think, I, I truly believe that staff uses city go, city money as if it were their own. They're not rationing expenditures, I think, and it's really nice. I really appreciate it.
Okay. I actually don't have anything to report. Uh, I just wish everyone a happy holiday season, Merry Christmas, Hanukkah, Kwanzaa, whatever you do. And if you don't do anything, well, enjoy it. That's all I got.
First, I'll say we all echo your comments, you're very eloquent, I mean, much appreciated. Um, I have one significant thing to report. Uh, shortly after the last council meeting, I had a two-day trip up to Denver for Jaffa. And uh, I guess the significant thing that happened in the meeting is we were all set to approve the qualified allocation plan, which is the rules and guidelines for giving out the federal uh, credits and state credits. And at the last minute, the Governor's Energy Office decided to rework the whole thing. And so now we're going to meet again in, in December and go through it. But the primary emphasis, and it's not necessarily that one, it's a little controversial coming basically presented on the day of the meeting, was really tightening the energy efficiency standards for people that qualify for own-credit. Now, that's a good thing, uh, for obvious reasons. But the whole energy market is changing, I don't need to tell Mike or Carlos. And do you really want to require film on windows? When it's, makes sense if twelve cents a kilowatt hour, but you may be paying nine cents, you know, five years from now. So it's controversial between the cities and the rural communities. Um, and I just wanted to report that I also managed to, uh, Dana Crawford graciously invited me to have drinks with her. So we went to the Crawford Hotel, and she is, she is a queen there. That should be a surprise. That's all I got.
Well, I don't have anything except that I noticed the incoming council members are here. Um, I know we have one that served before, but we have two newbies coming on. Something me and Karen did was went to some training up in Denver for new council members. I urge y'all to get with Audra and maybe check into possibly seeing that, uh, seeing about taking a course if you're interested. That's all I have.
Audra, I talked to you about that. Did you, uh, did you find out because you weren't sure if it was still available?
Uh, the person who conducts the class called back, she's trying to get one scheduled.
Okay, good. Joe?
I don't have nothing, thank you. Merry Christmas.
Uh, kind of do have a couple of things. Uh, last week, the MED was here. I think it was last week, wasn't it?
Two weeks ago.
Two weeks, was it?
Two weeks, yeah.
Two weeks, no, on Wednesday. And that was a pretty interesting meeting that we all attended, whoever was there. And I think we all took away the, some information that we'll be able to use going forward with um, the two marijuana issues that have come at us pretty quick. Uh, we had the tree lighting here last week, which was a nice week. The reason why it was cold, we had quite a few people there. Uh, good job by the city of Trinidad, all the, the city of Trinidad looks great. I mean, you go up and down the street and I can just, again, tell the, everyone that had a participation, anyone that had anything to do with the lighting in Trinidad, uh, they're doing a great job, even the businesses. You go downtown, there's trees and windows and ornaments and it's very festive downtown, so that's really great. Saturday, uh, there was a dedication of a park bench at the uh, across from the uh,
Veterans Park.
The Veterans Park. And Barbara Avis, uh, she made this bench, and I urge everybody to go down and take a look at that. I mean, that is a piece of art.
Is that where is it?
It's at the
Right on the corner, across from Chaminot on Convent and Motita Drive where the
Oh, yeah.
Monument is for veterans.
Yeah.
There's a new bench there.
I mean, she actually took and had this cut out, and, or she cut it out herself. I asked her how long it took and she, it took her like a hundred hours. And it is, I mean, there are like cutouts of soldiers and airplanes and boats and paratroopers and, I mean, just go by and think of what they're It's, but, no, it's still. And then on the side of it, there's, there's every emblem of the military that, it's kind of really, I encourage everyone to go take a look at that. So she did a wonderful job, I just thought I'd mention that to, as well. I uh, I saw an interesting article today, Kevin Naquin, I sat down, we probably all do a look at the news on our, on our cell phones. And it was interesting that I found this uh, thing, and it was, and this is happening in Europe as we speak evidently, that there is an encouragement by, there's a, between the airlines and the train services. Uh, all of the airline, not all of them, but there are some airlines that are encouraging train services. Uh, for short term, for short distances rather than long distances, because the airlines want to concentrate on long distances. So here we are as a country, we're trying to eliminate train service, and they're trying to expand train, they're actually promoting train service. So that's an interesting
But they also have bullet trains.
Well, it doesn't happen, but they're, they're trying to expand their service to work together, and that's what I think that this country needs to do.
Yeah.
We're not as simplistic.
Uh, Mike, you got that information about that letter of support that we will need to send up to, or, for, for she speak? Uh, I talked with, uh, he was in town yesterday, uh, uh, the Senate President, Mr. Garcia. And I asked him if it would probably be a good idea to get a letter of support as well from the college, because they're trying to put that program into place. So if you want to contact the college, Dr. Eppert, and see if she's willing to put in some kind of a support letter in that name. You probably got that other information from Debbie Wagner, uh, for to send the information to. That is all. I have, Mike with you.
So, uh, where do I start? He didn't mention legislative days.
Right, right.
Okay, that's, that's December ninth, just a reminder, um, nine thirty to noon. A little bit longer. Also on December ninth, we have a, a work session that is for land use code only. Uh, I believe Audrey gave you paper copies to make notes on. I know that I like paper, I can't make notes on my screen. So that's, that's all day. Uh, Carrie McColl from McColl and Associates will be in town at around one o'clock and available at City Hall. If any council has some questions for her prior to the work session, but then she'll be here for the work session. Uh, we have a weekly call. I, I'm on a weekly call with Dana Crawford and the group doing, trying to generate some uh, funds and the plans to redo the Fox Theater. Just as an FYI, she uh, brought down someone from the Colorado Symphony. And um, they were truly amazed with, with everything that went on there. Uh, she says we need to have some concerts in there, we need to do some things in there. She is a queen. She's wishing to go and, so I've been the bearer of bad news. We uh, we, this week, our building inspector, our fire chief, uh, safety officer, uh, public works director, are all going to go in there to take a look at the theater, see if it's possible. There's going to be, have to be some modifications. We want to encourage that, you know, if we have entertainment in there, generate, as we're trying to refurbish it, if we can have some shows to generate some community events that's going on. She has already tentatively scheduled a September twenty-seventh All Around Symphony orchestra. She doesn't know how many to come down and play. And as I again said, it's got to be tentative. We've got to make sure, safety-wise and everything. So, um, just wanted to let you know because I know she's telling everybody. September, I'm sorry.
She mentioned it to me.
September twenty-seventh of, of twenty twenty.
Okay.
So we've got some time to, to take a look at that. Yes, sir.
If you don't mind, just that brought up, I seen it in the newspaper, there was a picture of me holding a broom. Took me back to my Navy days, but we did get in there and do one heck of a job on a cleanup in there getting started. So I know with no restrooms is gonna, there's gonna be a major problem holding events and stuff in there. But yeah, we're, she's rallying the troops and we're starting to get in there and do some cleanups and stuff. So I'm impressed to hear what you think about how it looks when you get in there.
I did look to clean, I was in there yesterday, uh,
Yeah.
Some of the Alphabahr group was in town yesterday and they wanted to tour itself.
So, and, and with that being said, they've been having tours. Uh, we insured the building, she's got liability insurance. Um, but we want to get in there and make sure that the areas where people shouldn't be going, like upstairs and the third floor and everywhere, that, that we're safe and we're covering all our liabilities. Speaking of rallying the troops on the call this morning, there's an opportunity for Saving America's Treasure Preservation Grant, U.S. Department of Interior of Natural Park Service. It's a five hundred thousand dollar maximum grant. And guess what? The deadline is December tenth.
What's the match?
So, um, the match is fifty thousand cash. The rest is in kind. It, it's not budgeted for anywhere in our budget for twenty twenty. If we apply for this grant, we'll find out in, I believe this one, we find out in April. I've talked to Cheryl, there's, there's some monies there. I just need to, during one of these work sessions, talk to council about all these requests for monies. And we've kind of committed ourselves to doing something with the Fox, which I think is great, but there's, there's match. There's, uh, the initial, this match, this grant would be for architectural phasing and actually getting the plans in place. Right now, it's all, this would be great, we need to do this, we need to have this, but I've been driving them toward okay, but we need to phase this out because it's huge. And so this grant would be for that. So I don't know if council um, has any issues with us applying for the grant with the possibility of fifty thousand dollar cash.
Can you do it, Natalie?
What's that?
How, how much?
Well, actually, part of the group uh, is a gentleman named Chris Chipoletti, and he is their grant writer fundraising. As part of the agreement council signed with urban neighborhoods, they're providing the grant. If we get some of these grants going, the matches will start just being grant, matching this grant and, uh, to get, to get moving forward. That's, that's all I have.
I don't know, we have our council elect people here tonight, and I encourage you guys to be at the legislative days on the ninth. And that's from nine thirty to probably noon. Is that At the Pioneer Room at the college. And like I said, we'll, all of the councils will be there, a majority of council members will be there. Uh, the county commissioners will be there. The state legislators will be there as the senate legislator. We'll also have representatives from the national level, from all three houses, will be there to represent our area. Plus we'll have some emphasis on opioids, homeless, uh, a few other items. So I encourage you guys to be there so they can kind of get an idea of what's happening in those arenas, so. Les?
I don't have anything, ma'am, council. Sorry. How could I talk that?
Raider, yeah. Your Raiders lost their
Oh, did I forget? Silly me.
Second.
Call a vote please.
Donato?
Yes.
Goodall?
Yes.
Rico?
No. I just wanted to see if you were listening.
It's just one time, just
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Rico?
It's amazing how fast they all went. She's like, what?
Karen, I think the charter provides for that, it says you have to